I would like to reconvene the meeting and call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of Cinco de Mayo 2015. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson.
Here.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Here.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino.
Here. City Attorney Trujillo, could you please give us a report of the closed session?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The City Council held a closed session pursuant to the existing litigation exception to the Ralph M. Brown Act, and I'm pleased to report that there is no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trujillo. Our first order of business this evening is a presentation of the Water Awareness School Poster Contest winners. The presentation will be given by Water Conservation Specialist Myra Ritchie.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council Members, City Departments Heads, and fellow city residents. I am honored to announce that we implemented our sixth annual water awareness poster/slogan contest, and I'm happy to say that this year was very competitive. We've had over three hundred, three hundred twenty-three participants who submitted posters from third-grade students in the Santa Maria Bonita School District. This was a huge difference from students who participated last year, which was a hundred and twelve difference as far as last year's contestants. There was over ten elementary schools who actually participated, and out of the ten, we have two of the teachers who have their students being awarded this evening. Again, it is very rewarding that I'm able to be invited to these schools and do class presentations. I cover the water cycle, water conservation tips and ideas, and also where does our water come from. Again, the most rewarding part is being asked to come back and teach almost every year. I've had one teacher who I've grown close to, and I can also not say that she's also the best teacher who've actually encouraged her students to participate, but I can also call her my friend. Also part of my job, I do water audits. I go up to city residents and I do water audits and do check leaks. And also too, I'm happy to say that I do also water audits for the green business program for commercial, industrial, and institutional. So with further ado, I'd like to call upon Ms. Moranaka. She is the principal of Tunnel School to help me to give out the prizes and awards to our students. So first and foremost, I would like to call upon Andrea Mora Porcayo, who received honorable mention for this year. She is from Ontivero School in Mrs. Mahoney's class. Andrea received all-day play pass from Boomers, seven free swim passes to Paul Nelson Aquatic Center, and two free skate passes to the Central Coast Arena. Congratulations, Andrea.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And for third-place winner, I'd like to call upon Paris Razoo from Tunnel School in Ms. Stenzel's class. And Paris was able to receive $25 gift certificate to Cool Hand Luke's, all-day play pass from Boomers, ten free swim passes to Paul Nelson Aquatic Center, one complimentary ticket to the annual Elks Rodeo, and one free pass to the Santa Maria Discovery Museum. Congratulations, Paris.
Our teacher taught us about why it's important to save water in our community. We learned about the drought in our state. We watched a YouTube video about water conservation. We watched a slideshow about saving water. We talked about slogans and ideas for what to draw. I would like to thank my teacher, Ms. Stenzel, because she showed us a YouTube video to learn about water, and my parents, because they also helped me conserve water.
Great.
And second-place winner goes to Desiree Rodriguez from Tunnel School, also from Ms. Stenzel's class.
I would like to thank my teacher because she taught us about water, and she taught us about the California drought. I would also like to thank my parents because they showed me different ways to save water.
And we have first-place winner goes to Ava Rae Malena from Tunnel School, also from Ms. Stenzel's class. Ava Rae is receiving $50 gift certificate to Cool Hand Luke's Restaurant, two free passes to the Santa Barbara Zoo, all-day play pass from Boomers, fifteen free swim passes to Paul Nelson Aquatic Center, and three free passes to Santa Maria Discovery Museum. Congratulations, Ava Rae.
Wow. Excellent.
Ms. Stenzel taught us about why it's important to save water in our city. We learned about the water shortage in our state. We watched a YouTube video about water conservation. We watched a slideshow about water. We talked about slogans and ideas for what to draw. We learned that all plants, animals, and humans need water to live. I would like to thank my teacher, Ms. Stenzel, because she let us do this fun contest.
And again, this year, we did a slight twist to our contest. We had added a slogan, so each student who participated was able to create five words or less for a new slogan. So with that said, I'd like to call upon Andrea Lemus of Tunnel School, which is in, which she is in Ms. Kirshman's class. She's not here at this time, but again, we'd like to congratulate Andrea Lemus. And Andrea was able to receive all-day play pass from Boomers, six free swim passes to Paul Nelson Aquatic Center, two free skate passes to the Central Coast Arena, and also just so you know, because with the new slogan, we are actually using her slogan for our bus ad, so it's "Save Water for Life." Congratulations. Thank you.
That's sweet. Looks like a politician.
Again, students, thank you, and to the parents and to the teachers. Ms. Moranaka, thank you so much. I also have, I also have one more announcement, and I would like to thank and congratulate. If Ms. Laura Stenzel, third-grade teacher from Miss Tunnel School, would come, I'd like to present. This is a teacher I was telling you about. Again, she has been participating in our contest since 2010, so that's six years in a row. Her students have placed either first, second, third place, or even honorable mention. But again, Ms. Stenzel, on behalf of the years working with you, doing class presentations, and you participating, this simple token appreciates for all that you do for your students and your school, and again, thank you so much.
I feel honored to have been able to encourage and inspire students in the Santa Maria community to spread the message about how important it is to conserve water. And I am very passionate about my teaching, and I'm very blessed that my students, that they're very motivated by that passion that I try to deliver, and I'm honored to be here today, and I thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
And as we do every year, we have a poster made up for City Hall, so this poster here will be up to represent the students of their hard work. And we are representing May is Water Awareness Month. So again, with that said, students, I hope you enjoy your prizes and your boards, and also too, we have a goodie bag. This is our department's new recycle bag, so each and every one of the students will be able to receive one of these, which have a water conservation kit, other conservation incentives, along with activity books from all of our campaigns, water conservation, recycling, bog, used oil. So again, ladies and gentlemen, students, if you may rise.
One more time.
Once again, I present to you 2015 Water Awareness Poster Winners.
Thank you, Ms. Ritchie, and congratulations to all of the contest winners. Thank you very much. Next item is the proclamation, and Councilmember O'Rourke will be making that presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the proclamation. City of Santa Maria, Santa Maria, California proclamation. Whereas during the month of May, the California Water Awareness Campaign works closely with the water purveyors throughout California to increase public understanding of the importance of water conservation and promote public awareness about the availability, reliability, and management of our very precious resource. And whereas this year, the City of Santa Maria Utilities Department sponsored its sixth annual water awareness school poster/slogan contest, inviting all third-grade students in Santa Maria to complete by creating colorful posters symbolizing Water Awareness Month and by establishing a new slogan for water conservation. And whereas water is one of the city of Santa Maria's most precious natural resources and a vital part of our economy and environment, and whereas every business, industry, schools, and citizen take, make a difference when it comes to the use of water, thus promoting a healthy economy and community, highlighting the importance of water in every aspect of daily life, and encouraging each other to be stewards of California's water resources for present and future generations. And whereas residents of the city of Santa Maria are encouraged to conserve water by using items such as low-flow showerheads, toilet tank banks, shower and hose timers, shut-off nozzles, selected plants that are suitable for California's climate, and being well-informed through public service announcements, press releases, and brochures. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby proclaims the month of May 2015 as Water Awareness Month in the city of Santa Maria, and urge residents and businesses to increase their water awareness and make water conservation a continuing way of life. And again, Myra gets to come back and receive this and sign, sign, seal, and deliver.
Sign, seal, and deliver.
On behalf of Mayor Patino.
Again, thank you for this proclamation, and again, thank you for letting me acknowledge our students. I've been with the city for close to twelve years, and as I would tell my manager, I have about another fifteen more to go. But I do appreciate the people who I work with, especially city residents. I'm able to help you out when it comes to water conservation. You can call the Utilities Department. Right now, since May is Water Awareness Month, we do have water audits that are available along with water conservation kits. They are complimentary with the Utilities Department. And again, too, like our new bus logo, "Save Water for Life." Thank you.
Thanks, Myra.
Thank you very much, Myra. Now, Councilmember O'Rourke will present the proclamation for compost awareness.
Must be something in this, because I do this a lot of years, and here it comes. Okay, my wife's waiting for my plant, Bobby. This is the proclamation of the city of Santa Maria. Whereas the composting council of Canada, Ireland, Australia, United Kingdom, and the United States have declared the first week of May to be the annual International Compost Awareness Week. And whereas the city of Santa Maria wastewater treatment plant was an early pioneer in helping establish a regional compost facility at England Gray Incorporated, where the city's bio solids have been composted since 1993, transforming the compost into product that makes healthy soil and proven method of conserving water. Whereas City of Santa Maria Solid Waste Division developed a successful green waste collection program, diverting green waste from the landfill, conserving valuable land space, landfill space, and utilizing these valuable organics to make healthy soil through composting. And whereas Santa Maria Regional Landfill will, has diverted green waste from the landfill since 2009, conserving valuable space and recycling the valuable organics into the great soil amendments. Whereas the city of Santa Maria and England Gray Incorporated have created a partnership to serve the recycling goals for the Central Coast, and England Gray Incorporated has successfully taken organic feedstock and composted the material for suitable landscaping, horticulture, and agricultural practices. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, does hereby proclaim the week of May 3rd through the 9th, 2015, as Compost Awareness Week in the city of Santa Maria, in recognition of the efforts of the composting council's extension, extension agents, landowners, landscapers, farmers, recyclers, public works, composters, gardeners, and plant growers, and Bob O'Rourke. Witness thereof, sign, seal, and deliver, Bobby, and so again this year, and thank you for the, the plant. My wife's waiting.
Mayor, fellow council members, it's a privilege to receive this proclamation on behalf of the International Compost Awareness Week and the United States Composting Council. I'm actually the market development chair for the United States Composting Council, and we're one of the committees that kind of puts us on on an international basis, so we really thank you, and it's so great to do, receive this right after Myra, because the water savings that compost can contribute to the soil, and if we amend all of our soils with compost, we're going to retain the moisture in the ground, and we're going to use less water, and the composting effort is going to pay the largest dividends. I do want to let everybody know that we are this Saturday at Muscle Senior Center, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon, we're going to be having a symposium on low-impact gardens. We're going to, and we're going to have different types of plants on display that have, use less water, and we're also going to show how to improve the soil prior to putting in a low-impact garden, less, that uses less water. So we're going to do all that. On top of that, we're going to be giving away free vegetable transplants and free compost.
Oh, right.
So if you come around between 11:00 and 12:00, if you just want the compost, come at 9:00, if you want to hear about all the information and how to plant the transplants, but we'll be at the Muscle Senior Center, and you got to bring a little bag or a bucket or, you know, we had one person load it in the back of their Cadillac in the trunk one year. They just threw the compost in there and took off, but I told them I wouldn't say anything. So anyway, thank you very much for recognizing Compost Awareness Week and for your efforts in recycling. You know, we've been doing this since 1993.
Wow.
And I was pretty young back then when I first brought those plants, so take care.
I think the plants in our backyard are, you know, that big now.
Well, you put them in good compost.
Thank you for the plants, Bob. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Rangel. Next, we'll hear from Councilmember Boyson, who will present the proclamation for National Bike Month.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Of course, this is near and dear to my heart, and before I present the proclamation, I know Mr. Khan's group next Tuesday will be hosting a forum for the bikeways, for updating our bikeways document, and it'll be at 6:00 at Shepherd Hall, and probably last for about an hour, but if you've got any ideas on where you'd like to see bike lanes and how you'd like to improve our whole pedestrian and bike safety within the city, this would be the time to do it. So at 6:00 PM next Tuesday at Shepherd Hall in our library. So with that, whereas the month of May is National Bike Month, and May 11th through May 15 is Bike to Work Week, encouraging local residents to try biking for transportation. And whereas National Bike Month has been celebrated in the United States since 1956, and whereas commuting by bike has proven to be economical, environmentally sound, healthy for individuals and community, and whereas widespread bike commuting helps reduce traffic congestion, increase pollution-free transportation, provide a great form of aerobic exercise that can be enjoyed for a lifetime, and foster a great way to explore new vistas from a different and leisurely perspective. And whereas bicycling is a lifelong sport and a popular outdoor activity among youth in America, and the third-most popular activity among adults. And whereas bike commuting has grown 62% since 2000. And whereas the city of Santa Maria is committed to promoting and supporting multimodal transportation, including bicycling. And whereas all motorists are encouraged to share the road with cyclists. And whereas if Mrs. Boyson is watching this evening, if anything ever happens to me, please don't sell my bicycles for what I told you they cost me. Now, now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, does hereby recognize the month of May as National Bike Month in the city of Santa Maria, and encourages all residents to participate in National Bike Month activities to help promote the many benefits of cycling. And we have here to get this is from the Colvento Bike Club, Bob Alberg, but we also have Representatives, Ken, why don't you come on up from Tailwinds Bicycling as well?
Okay.
Ken Dally.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. A great honor to receive this proclamation and to recognize May as Bike Month. What that means is, of course, something different to everybody. As a thirty-year cyclist, it's not just being aware of cycling, but making cycling safe and more accessible to more people. I have a young child in the beginnings of bike-riding stages and getting out off the sidewalk and into our beautiful street system, and hopefully bike lane improvement systems will be a joy coming up. And things like this, the proclamation for Bike Month and bike safety, as we've done in the past, definitely helps in that direction, so thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Councilmember staff. I'm Ken Dally, president of the Tailwinds Bicycle Club. Thank you for the proclamation in recognition of bicycle and bicycling safety. The city has a very comprehensive bikeway master plan, and as Jack mentioned, next week, Steve and company are putting on a program to sort of explore how to prioritize some of the things that are in this. We can't do them all, but there's some important things to do there that we can help improve some of the existing bike lanes, as well as develop some new ones around the city. We have a lot of bikeways in the city, but a lot of them are disconnected. They go a ways, and then they stop, and they pick up, and they go away again. Hopefully, as a result of some of this, we'll be able to connect some of those bikeways. This will enable us to get through the city more easily and safer, and also get children to participate in biking, be able to go from their homes to their schools to their parks a lot more easily than they can in the present time. So we certainly appreciate your efforts.
Thank you, Ken.
Now, I would like to present the proclamation for Go Rodeo Days. Whereas the time is fast approaching for the Elks 72nd Annual Rodeo and Parade, May 28th through May 31st, 2015, in the city of Santa Maria, considered by many to be the event of the year. And whereas the Santa Maria Elks Rodeo Queen Kickoff and Auction took place on Saturday, April 11th, at the Santa Maria Elks Lodge 1538, and unveiled four candidates sponsored by Elks Recreation while raising funds with a live auction, raffle, and live entertainment. And whereas the Santa Maria Elks Rodeo begins Thursday, May 28th, and runs through Sunday, May 31st, at the Elks Unical Event Center. And whereas continuing the tradition of Clarence Manetti and Leland Butch Semus, hundreds of loyal Elk Lodge 1538 members have volunteered and have drafted to make this rodeo a tremendous success and to cause Elks Lodge 1538 to be named number-one Elks Lodge in the United States for sixteen of the last thirty-three years. And whereas Santa Maria Elks Rodeo Parade will begin at 9:00 on Saturday, May 30th, and continue down Broadway from Mill to Enos Streets, dedicated to the Breast Cancer Awareness Tough Enough to Wear Pink Program. And whereas it is tradition to begin wearing Western clothes several weeks prior to the rodeo dates. Now therefore, I, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognize May 1st through May 31st, 2015, as Go Rodeo Days in the city of Santa Maria, and encourage all residents to enter into the rodeo spirit by wearing Western apparel. Witness thereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Santa Maria to be affixed this fifth day of May 2015, and here to receive it is Phil Harwick and a bunch of guys from the Elks.
Elks are always, Elks 1538 and the Elks Recreation, the people within Elks 1538 that are charged with putting on this rodeo, very much appreciate the honor that you present to us every year. This is our 72nd rodeo. The Elks have put on this rodeo since 1943 without interruption, not war, famine, storms. We put on that rodeo every single year, and it's a good rodeo. This year is going to be even better. We have all the new acts, we still have the flying motorcycles, everything that everybody loves, plus some acts that are really, I want to talk, I'd like them to be a surprise, but they're good. They're really fun, and they're really funny, and you do want to be there to see them. And given that we are a rodeo, I'm pretty sure that we can help with International Compost Week. May I take the time to introduce the Elks officers who are here?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to start with Dick Parker. He's already ruler of the Elks Club. Mike Arnt, Board of Directors member. Kinky Signorelli, Vice President of Elks Recreation. Scott Parsons, Treasurer. Kim Newman, Director of Board of Directors. Did I miss any, oh, Karen Feldparch, and Jose Oriano. Jose is Secretary of our Board of Directors. I'm sorry. Jose's small, so he's hard to see. Anyways, we also have one of the finest BMX tracks in America, so we fit in with the Bicycle Week also. Thank you so much for this. Oh, and Tina asked me to thank you for the radio plug this morning, Madam Mayor.
What did I?
She said you plugged us on some radio show this morning.
I, I did.
It's been a long day for me also.
I had to think, what did I say? They were asking me about our third-quarter report, but we did talk about the rodeo, yes.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye. And thank you all, Elks, for what you do for the youth of our community, because you have done so much for so many years, but thank you. Our next proclamation is for the Day of Prayer, and Councilmember Zuniga will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas National Day of Prayer is an annual event established by an act of Congress which encourages Americans to pray for our nation, its people, and its leaders, and whereas many observances are held across our country which concentrate on the need to pray for those in leadership at all levels of national church and educational areas of influence. And whereas days of prayer have been called for since 1775, when the Continental Congress designated a time for prayer in forming a new nation, and whereas in 1863, Abraham Lincoln called for such a day. And whereas officially, Day of Prayer was established as an annual event by an act of Congress in 1952, and was signed into law by President Truman. And whereas the law was amended in 1988 and signed by President Ronald Reagan, established And whereas the law was amended in 1988 and signed by President Ronald Reagan, establishing the Day of Prayer as the first Thursday of May each year. And whereas Day of Prayer belongs to all Americans and every Americans can observe the Day of Prayer in his or her own way. And whereas Protestant, Roman, Catholic, and Jewish leaders are included in Day of Prayer's expression of this event, celebrated in Washington, D.C. and throughout the nation. Therefore, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognize May 7th, 2015, as Day of Prayer Observance in the City of Santa Maria and encourage people of all faith to participate in Day of Prayer according to their own traditions and accepting the proclamation as Kathy Staples in a committee looks like.
What a wonderful to receive proclamation talking about prayer in our community from this city council. Our enormous thanks and appreciation to you, Mayor Patino, and each one of you city council members, as you have been faithful through the years 18 to support the National Day of Prayer and all its work in our community. And this year, our theme is coming out of Kings. If I could pass this to you later to give to the... And it says, "Hear the cry and prayer of your servant praying in your presence this day." And because, you know, Father Charles was here earlier and he said, you know, "Thank God that you're having prayer still in a city council meeting on the central coast of California when others have come against it." And so, we want you to know that we are dedicated to backing you up as the decisions that you're making. And we are so grateful for our leadership in our police and fire department and throughout this city that we just, please, accept our thanks for your support. So, Judge Julio Flores is going to be our featured speaker. How exciting is that? If you know the judge like we know the judge, we're just thrilled about that because this particular theme, which is going across the United States of America, thousands of groups such as ours are going to be gathering across this nation, praying for their city, praying for their nation, because we have problems and we need hope and we need an answer. So, the judge told me, Kathy, I'd love to be your featured speaker. In fact, across my bench, daily, I'm having to make another Solomon decision. And so, he's coming with a heart that loves this community and loves the outreach. So, he said, Kathy, I want you to do something for me. I want you to make it bigger. I want you to expand into the community. I want you to help and heal people. So, we have done that. And in a moment, I'm going to introduce some of the many members of this leadership team that are part of it this year. So, in your packet, National Day is on top, all the materials are in English and Spanish, there is a prayer surge happening and it started today. There is five days of prayer about this city, for this city, and in this city going forth. It starts with the House of Prayer today, intercessory prayer from 10:30 a.m. to 8:00 for two days. They're going to pray for our city, our leaders, our people in positions of responsibility. And then National Day is coming, so we're going to have all you dignitaries that represent this community will be honored there and we're so grateful for each and every one of you. The next day, Judge Flores said, "I want a service to deal with hope and help." So, there will be a special service called an Evening of Hope at the Healing Rooms, in which event there are prayer teams ready for people who are needing help, who are needing hope, who are needing a touch from God to heal them right where they are. Now, that just tells you that the next day, Saturday, and Tara Presley has joined us to have the prayer walk start here at City Hall, go to the Fair Park, in which there will be 31 booths lined up where there are resources and help, whether it's city, county, or nonprofits. So, there's going to be more information, more help, and more resources, all to culminate in two special services in Spanish, Saturday night, at Four Square Church, for our Hispanic brothers and sisters who are Protestant, and at St. Louis de Montford in Orchid, for our brothers and sisters who speak Spanish in Orchid area at St. Louis de Montford at 6:45. So, 6:00, and Judge Flores will be joining us. He will be showing up at our 6:00 service at Four Square Church, and then he's going to head to have Mass over at St. Louis de Montford. So, he's going to be there at Evening of Hope. He's going to be there with us on the National Day. How blessed and privileged are we? So, we just thank you so much for this proclamation. Mayor Patino, we thank you so much for your dedication to this city and all that you've given us, the National Day of Prayer. Now, briefly, here is part of our team list. I'm going to read names because there's more than these, so just raise your hand when I raise it, okay? So, Pastor Steve Felton, Sister Catherine Sullivan, Cecile Prevost, Debbie Cloud, Ed Boasko, Pastor Dave Brogan, Jim Douglas, Cindy Douglas, Pastor Joel Areola, Maravita De Smith, Tara Presley, Marie Farley, and Pastor Gustavo Maramates. Those are the people who have together, shoulder to shoulder, put five days of a prayer surge together in prayer and fasting for our beloved city. So, we love you and we thank you so much for supporting this work.
Thank you very much to Kathy and all your committee. I especially like the picture here last year.
We were in the rain.
We were in the rain.
We were in the rain. We prayed for rain.
Yes, we did.
Right there, and we got rain. So, God is still listening and all things are possible with God.
That's right.
So, amen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you.
Our final proclamation this evening recognizes National Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day, and Councilmember Waterfield will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas all of the promises America offers, none is more precious or elusive than the right to be free from crime. And whereas the dedicated men and women who have chosen law enforcement as a career face extraordinary risks and dangers preserving our freedom and security. And whereas during the week of May 10th through May 16th, National Police Week is observed in order to recognize hazardous work, serious responsibilities, and strong commitment of our nation's peace officers. And whereas in conjunction with this important observance, the City of Santa Maria is observing May 13th, 2015, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in commemoration of those noble officers who have tragically sacrificed their lives in the line of duty. And whereas 13 California peace officers were recognized as being killed in the line of duty during 2014. And whereas these special observances provide all Santamarians with the opportunity to appreciate the heroic men and women who have dedicated their lives to preserving public safety. Now, therefore, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognize the week of May 10th through May 16th as National Police Week and proclaim Wednesday, May 13th, 2015, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the City of Santa Maria and encourages all residents to remember those individuals who gave their lives for our safety and express our appreciation to those who continue to dedicate themselves to making Santa Maria a safer place in which to live. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and have caused the seal of the City of Santa Maria to be affixed heretofore this 5th day of May, 2015. And before I announce the gentlemen that will be coming to receive this proclamation, I just want to thank the police officers, Chief Martin, for all that you do to keep the City of Santa Maria safe. I know it's a tough job. It's a hard job. I personally was brought up in law enforcement. I have a son who's a police officer and a son-in-law who is a police officer in Arizona. And I just want to give you my complete gratification and thank you for everything that you do to keep us safe. And who will be receiving this is Officers Logan and Murillo.
Good evening. Normally, we're sent to clear buildings, not council meetings, so I guess I'll save the best class. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, members of the city staff, members of the community. Again, I'm Officer Logan. This is Officer Morello of the Bureau of Santa Maria Police Department. This year, we've been selected to chair the annual Santa Maria Police Department Peace Officers Memorial Ceremony, which is to be held at the Santa Maria Police Department on Wednesday, May 13th, at 10:30 a.m. at 206 East Cook Street. The ceremony is to honor and celebrate the lives of the 13 peace officers who in the state of California lost their lives in the line of duty in 2014. To honor those lost recently, our department sent six officers to Sacramento for the statewide police officer memorial. In addition to having the honor to recognize those officers, it was truly an honor for myself and Officer Morello to be selected to represent the City of Santa Maria, and we were able to travel to New York City in January to recognize the two fallen officers who lost their lives. So, again, that was a great honor for both of us and we were proud to do that for the city. We are honored to accept and grateful for the kind words of this proclamation and the acknowledgement of the service of the heroes who have made the ultimate sacrifice. With that, we would like to welcome all of you, as well as members of the community, to attend the memorial ceremony, which will include a keynote speaker, inspirational readings, and a 21-gun salute. A fundraiser luncheon will follow at the Able Maldonado Center at 11:30, and all the proceeds do go to the department's benevolent funds. So, again, on behalf of Officer Morello, myself, and all the members of our agency, we do thank you.
Thank you.
The next order of business is... Thank you, Mr. Ora. We have a Boy Scout sitting in the back, right? Would you like to come up to the podium, introduce yourself, and let us know what you're doing here tonight?
My name is Raymond Maffei, and I am working on a citizenship in the Community Merit Badge. And I'm coming here for this one because I have to attend a meeting of a city council.
Good for you!
What's your troop?
My troop is 87.
Well, thank you so much for coming here tonight. And you saw all these different proclamations, so you've seen a lot of what people are doing here in our community. Great.
Does it say that you have to stay awake during the whole meeting?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Ora, for bringing that to my attention. The next order of business is the public comment session. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of this agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the agenda. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken by the city council on matters not printed on the agenda this evening. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak for them.
And do we have any speakers this evening?
Madam Mayor, we have two.
Two. So, no other requests will be taken at this time. Ken Daly, followed by Donna Olivera.
Okay, thanks, Ken.
Okay. Donna Olivera.
Hi.
Thank you. And you will be given three minutes. Thank you.
I just wanted to speak on behalf of the first three proclamations that were called today regarding the environmental issues facing not just Santa Maria, but California and the rest of the world. Specifically, I wanted to talk about, address the issue that we, well, you guys, that city council members, can do a lot more than just making a proclamation in regards to city ordinances and approving land development in our city. One of the little girls, actually, when she came and spoke, she brought up the issue of the water shortage. And I live on the north, south side of town, and my surrounding areas all, once was farmland, and now it's currently being developed into new homes. And how, I wanted to bring up the issue of how are we, or you guys, how you can negotiate that area, that gray area, between land development, that's bringing new people and more water usage, and then trying to address and proclaim conservation of our resources when we already have a shortage in the city and yet we're developing more land to bring more people here in areas that aren't necessarily about conservation. And, yeah, that was basically it.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the public comment portion of this agenda. Before we move on, Mr. Hayden, do you have any comments? Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, would you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for city council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Okay. Do any council members have items they wish to pull for discussion?
Hi, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull item F.
Yeah?
C and I. Oh, yeah, C and I.
Mr. Ora?
Yeah, I'm good.
Mr. Boyson? Okay.
No, I don't want to talk about C.
Okay.
I want to talk about I, but not C and I.
C are the warrants.
Isn't C payment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Waterfield, C?
Yes, I just need abstain from that.
Oh, okay.
Vote.
And item F, Ms. Sunnega, which is the Los Alamos Library Rental Agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask Ms. Halsel to maybe just expand on or just review kind of what's here. I think some of the community would be interested in that, that we're adding now another library to our system, which is really awesome. But I know there might be some questions about financing and all of that, so I thought this would be a good opportunity for you to talk about that, please.
Good evening, Mayor Patino and council members. Ms. Sunnega, are there specific questions that you have that you would like me to address?
I think, you know, if you could just share in general about now this adds another library to our system and what other libraries are included in our system, and maybe about the lease agreement, how that's going to be paid for and how it's going to be staffed. And then maybe the hours of operation and the expected start date. How about that? Thank you.
So, since 1962, the county has had an agreement every year with the City of Santa Maria to run the libraries in the unincorporated areas of Orchid and Cuayama and in the city of Guadalupe. And it's done by zone. There are three zones in the county, so Santa Maria is Zone 3. And I brought some maps of the zone in case you're interested. It shows the three zones. And so, we get close to $1 million a year at the present time. It's $988,000 that we appropriate per capita. So, the city keeps about 70% of that amount that goes into serving our city residents, and then the other 30% goes to running the county libraries. So, Los Alamos has a population of about 2,000, and so, they would get somewhere close to 12,000 or in that neighborhood. And one staff member of 19 hours a week is $9,300 a year. We'll probably have the library open 16 hours a week or so. The friends of the library are going to form an MOU with the city and they'll be paying for some of the utilities, and then we'll pick up the tab for the phone, which is $1,100 a year. The building rent is $12 a year. The black gold fee is about $800 a year. So, those, we used to have a library in Los Alamos and it closed in 1988. And there are many people there who can't drive and get into another town that has a library, so they're looking forward to having the service. Also, the school district joined with the citizens in town to ask us if we would consider serving that community again. And the school... And the school... the Los Alamos School has quite a high number of students who get the free and reduced lunch, and that number is 82%, which is quite high at the Olga Reed School. And a lot of those kids don't have computers in the home, and they don't have Wi-Fi, needless to say, so the library will be really helpful for serving some of those families. Hopefully, it'll be open three afternoons a week and Saturday morning and early afternoon.
So much. I just want to, you know, personally, just thank you for your commitment and dedication to making sure that, you know, these communities that are outlying from ours, that are smaller, that have problems getting access are getting access. I just really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to work with that group. It's very inspiring for me as a librarian to see that true desire they have to bring the service there. So thank you all for supporting it.
Thank you, Ms. Halsel. Item I is the second reading of the ordinance of the city council relating to the annual 5% water and sewer rate increases.
And I just want a separate vote on that.
You want... Okay, you want to pull that for a separate vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so do I have a motion?
Move for the approval of the agenda with the exception of C and I.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved to approve the consent item with the exception of C and I. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Now, move for the approval of item C.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and second to approve item C. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Abstain.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
And now, move for the approval of item I.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and second to approve item I. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
No.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Okay. The next order of business is a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will consider the quarterly financial report for the third quarter of 2014-15 and adopt a resolution approving amendments to the 2014-15 budget and authorizing the city manager to implement the same.
The staff report is to be made by... I was wondering who that was walking up there.
Cowboy.
By Director of Administrative Services, Mr. Visay.
I don't have any boots, so I thought I'd wear a hat instead. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and the public. Tonight, I'll be reviewing the third quarter financial report through March 31st of 2015, primarily reviewing the general fund and enterprise funds. The beginning fund balance as of June 30th of 2014 was $10,099,000, and that is the audited final balance at that time period. Through the third quarter of the year, sales tax receipts are about $786,000 greater than last fiscal year through the first nine months. Gains in both auto sales, general consumer goods, restaurant sales, and building and construction are the categories showing the most increase. This is primarily offset, though, by a decline in sales tax coming from fuel and service stations because of the low fuel prices at this time. NHIS revenue is coming in much more than anticipated. Through March, we received about $2.3 million, and this one-time revenue source is primarily due to all the oil companies increasing their excavation of sites. Improving economy and land values have encouraged oil companies to clean up their contaminated sites, resulting in a large increase in this NHIS revenue. But this revenue source was $5.5 million, remember, back in about six years ago, in '08, '09. And while revenues are more than anticipated at this point in the fiscal year, these are one-time revenue sources. In pursuant to council direction, any non-hazardous impact to soil revenue in excess of budgeted amounts is supposed to be transferred to the LEAF fund at the end of the year to replenish that fund, which is very prudent to do at this time. A declining revenue source is interest income. We are projecting about $600,000 this fiscal year and $500,000 next fiscal year, and whereas back in '07, we received $3.2 million in interest income earnings at that time. This is partly due to the extremely low interest rate environment and the declining cash balances in the city's general fund, the local economic augmentation fund, and the general capital projects fund. Interest income earned by these three funds are all credited to the general fund. The LEAF fund cash balance has declined from $11.7 million in '07-'08 to the current $6.3 million, and the general capital projects fund has declined from $14.4 million in '10-'11 to the current $6.7 million. And as you know, this fund is being used to... for the new police building, and should be spent within the next year and a half. Permit revenue is coming in at $1.6 million through March 31st, or about 72% of budget versus $1.3 million at the last fiscal year through March. By the end of the year, we should expect to receive about the $2.2 million we budgeted. Concerning Measure U, revenues through the third quarter excluding accruals are at 65.9% of budget, or $2,565,000, and expenditures are at 68.8%. The police department is under budget primarily because of the vacancies and yet to be purchased capital expenditures for the Bearcat, $94,000. Overall, through the third quarter, roughly 90% of all Measure U expenditures were public safety-related, with 47% spent on fire operations and 43% spent on police operations. And by year-end, we anticipate revenues to be right at expenditure levels. As for the enterprise funds, the water... for the water and wastewater fund, expenditures exceeded revenues by $137,000, effectively breaking even through March 31st. The expenditures included the semiannual debt service interest payment of $800,000 for the total amount of $4.6 million on the 2012 refunding bonds. In the third quarter, the second and final interest payment was made at $800,000. The solid waste fund, revenues exceeded expenditures by $595,000. That concludes my staff report, and I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Any questions from the council?
Nope.
None. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak or written communications?
We have no requests to speak or written communications.
Okay. I'd like to bring the item back to the council for discussion or a motion.
Madam Mayor, I would move for the approval of Resolution Number 2015-41.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and second to approve... Okay, what was the...
2015-41.
2014... Okay. Any... Okay. Take the call? Yes, please.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. The next item will be a report by the city manager. Mr. Hayden?
Thank you, Mayor Patino. Members of the city council, your next agenda will be the 19th of May. We have a number of proclamations and presentations that night. Nothing close to what we had this evening. We had about four or five of them on the 19th. We have a number of consent agenda items planned for the next city council meeting, and a couple of them are agreements. One is with the County of Santa Barbara for animal control services for the '15-'16 fiscal year. Another one is for the home consortium allocations, the renewal of that with Santa Barbara County. And then we're also bringing forward the final action plan for the CDBG recommendations for next fiscal year. We also are going to have a couple of regular business items. We're going to have an ordinance, the first reading, on the prohibition of bath salts and also spice. Also going to be bringing forward, for council's consideration, the modified Stage One Water Shortage Contingency Plan that council is putting together in relation to the governor's executive order. Also, we're looking at a review from the Office of Independent Review out of LA. If you recall, they came to the city a year and a half ago, and they put together 57 recommendations for the police department to take a look at as far as policies and procedures and guidelines. They have reviewed... it's been a one-year anniversary since their initial presentation to the city council. We indicated that they would be coming back in a year from now, and now we're at that junction, so they're going to be given a recommendation to council as far as which policies have been implemented and a status report for the community as well. And then lastly, we are possibly going to be having a presentation to the city council. We're trying to put that together right now on proposed surveillance cameras that the police department is looking at purchasing and deploying throughout the city. They're portable surveillance cameras, and we're going to try to put together a presentation not only for the city council, but also for the viewing public as well.
Is that different from the pods?
That is the pods.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. So...
Questions?
That concludes my report.
I have a question.
Yes.
When it comes to the consent calendar, we are given pretty good information about what we're voting on. How is that disseminated to the public? How do they get that information?
Everything is given via the website.
Website?
Yes, ma'am. All of our agenda reports and everything. When we conclude and we put together the agenda binders, which are usually on Thursday late afternoons, we are populating our website at that time as well, too.
Okay.
Yes. So they get the same information as the council does.
Because with Councilwoman Zuniga, you know, she had that pulled, which gave people information of what is going on, so I thought that was a great idea. So I don't, you know, I don't know if... we should do that periodically, but... and that's why I asked the question, how do they gather that information? If they don't have access to a website, do they... is it available at the library?
Yes, we have it... we have copies at the library. We also have copies at the city clerk's office as well, too.
Okay, great.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Ray.
So if I could just respond to Councilmember Waterfield. So the reason that I do that is occasionally there'll be something that I think like this, and it's not only, you know, we want the public to know, and there are people who are shut in, so we have a lot of seniors in the community who... all the information they get about what's going on in the city is through this. They don't have the ability, maybe, to get to the library or to City Hall, or don't have access to computers, so just for that. It's also an opportunity to let departments get to talk about some of the things that they're doing, right, and just have people get to meet, like, you know, you read it, but you don't see the person who's kind of moving it forward, and so it's a nice way to be able to recognize staff for their efforts, too. So I do it for those two reasons. Thank you.
Okay. That's it? Okay. Let's start with the... Mr. Boyson?
You want me?
Yes.
Okay, I've got a lot for change.
Great, great. Mr. O'Rourke's got two months.
Yeah. I left my list at home again.
You can go back to sleep now, Bob. On April... AB 1234 notification on the 23rd, I attended the Central Coast Water Authority Board Meeting. From... on April 27th through the 29th, I attended the Housing California Conference in Sacramento, and I went to a couple of very interesting breakout sessions that are going to come back and be influenced... have influence here in the city of Santa Maria. One is the repeal of Proposition 13 is gaining momentum. Proposition 13 strictly for commercial properties. As most of you know, one of the unintended consequences of the original Proposition 13 was that commercial properties tended to be exempt from any increases whatsoever because they can shield the ownership of their property behind corporations, and so the property doesn't actually get transferred, the corporation does, whereas it may be the same person actually operating it, but the ownership is transferred. And there's quite a movement on to repeal that portion of Proposition 13. It certainly is going to be contested. It's going to be significantly controversial. One of the biggest arguments that they see is going to be from small businesses saying that, you know, this is going to hurt them. One of the ideas they're coming up with is that maybe they'll exempt commercial property under $1 million, something like that. And so it's really intended to go after those big skyscrapers that are still valued at 1978 prices and... but may have changed hands three, four, even five times between now and then. But in any event, I thought it was a very interesting discussion. Both sides were there, and it's going to be up to all of us, I think, and I'm sure all of us have been contacted for support from one side of this or the other. One of the other breakout sessions that I went to is some new and innovative ideas for affordable housing. One of the ideas was for a 300 to 400-square-foot apartments that actually can accommodate a family of four in a two-bedroom setting with walls that raise during the day and walls that come down at night to make the whole apartment a bedroom... two bedrooms, they go up during the day. Beds are moved up into the ceiling and this sort of thing so that, you know, the living space is available all during the day. Very, very innovative. I asked the question, well, this has got to be expensive, and they basically do it with a series of garage door opener-type machinery, so it's really not an expensive-type thing for these things, and it really may be the wave of the future for solving some of our affordable housing programs. One of the other things, the Housing and Community Development has recently issued a NOFA, and they're using funds from the state-collected CO2 excess emissions credit funding. They... about $200 million of this money is going to be going into affordable housing that can be connected to improved transit systems. And I haven't quite figured out how we can work with some of our low-income housing providers to go after some of this money, but there may be something that we can do in partnership with the city as far as, you know, trying to come up with this transit, improve transit theme to attract some of this money. Anyways, a very fascinating conference. I go to it pretty much every year, and it's... I always learn something new. On the 30th, I hosted the new C3H Executive Director and took him on a tour of our various homeless resources here in Santa Maria. I encouraged him to contact each and every one of you. He's committed to actually be in North County two days a week, so just as a heads-up, I'm sure he'll be contacting you and kind of get some of your thoughts on how we can better coordinate the Central Coast Collaborative on Homelessness here in North County. On May 4th, I met with Zeke Marino and Phil Cinco, and we talked about the commercial vehicles and RVs in residential neighborhoods. I've asked... I've received complaints from some contractors that have been cited for signage on their vehicles that are parked in front of their houses or in their driveways, and in a couple of instances, they actually were required to remove the signage. I think that we need to have some flexibility on this. We, you know, Santa Maria is a blue-collar town. We're a working town. There's a lot of individual contractors, individuals that maybe take a company truck home at night, things like this. And I've asked Phil and Zeke to maybe come up with a presentation for the city council at a future date, that maybe we can look at some of these things and decide, you know, what should we allow and what shouldn't we allow? Some of these... obviously, some of these things 30 and 40 feet long, we don't want to see in a driveway, but certainly a van with a sign on it, or a regular car with a sign on it. I mean, quite honestly, I'm sure we've all seen Donna Randalls' van around town. Right now, if that's parked in her driveway, if she's in the city of Santa Maria, if that's parked in her driveway, a neighbor could complain about it, and we'd go out and investigate it and probably find that she's in violation. So I think there's some of those things that we could have some flexibility on. I don't mean to pick on Donna. If you're listening, Donna...
We love you, Donna.
We love you, Donna, for everything...
I do.
For everything you do in the city, and actually, we're doing this for you. Yeah. But in any event, I think we do need to accommodate these... some of these small business owners, and so I think that they'll be coming forth to us sometime in the near future with presentation. And on that same day, I did meet with Peter Gilli and a group interested in our... the bikeways presentation that we're going to be having next Tuesday. And one of the things that came out of that meeting is that they would really like to see the city council have a resolve to fix a bike pass within city... within the city limits, as well as coming up with connecting our bike lanes and making the city of Santa Maria more pedestrian and bicycle safety. We all... We all know of the accidents that we've, we've had in recent years in the city of Santa Maria. We all know of sidewalks that don't go anywhere, and you have to walk across streets that are extremely dangerous and that sort of thing. And as, as Ken Daly was pointing out today, that we have numerous bike lanes that go for six or eight blocks in the city, and then they end for six or eight blocks, and then they pick up again and that sort of thing. Somehow, we need to, we need to connect these and, and make Santa Maria a much more bicycle and pedestrian friendly city. That's all I got.
Mr. O'Rourke?
Well, I, I spoke with, you know, talking about speaking with staff, I had met with Zeke at Code Enforcement. We talked about the homeless issue, and I had brought up the point that we didn't get funding out of our community development block grant funds to, for weekend code folks, and tried to expand on how we can make that happen. And I also met with Alex Posada and I think it's KJ Stone, the commander of the, of the Rangers, the city Rangers, in, in talking about the same thing because they're, they're also involved in the homeless issues. And I know I had a couple of others, I left my notes at home, but then last night, yourself and myself, Alice, were in attendance at Vets Hall for the All-America City Committee, had their speaker's presentation and talked about how you get set up in a, well, it's not officially a neighborhood watch program, but I think we're moving in that direction. We've got staff coming on board, and we used to have that kind of emphasis, but a couple of people spoke of how they've initiated that and been very successful in reducing crime and in picking up the, the way the neighborhood looks. And The Times today had a great article on the front page, and Joy Castang did a great job presenting the, the Code Enforcement side of that, and then Russ, our officer, presented. Oh, you can go from there. Yeah. So I'll let you go on from there, if that's it.
Ms. Waterfield?
On Wednesday, April 22nd, I toured the Grizzly Academy in San Luis Obispo with the Santa Maria Joint High School District. And if you don't know anything about the Grizzly Academy, it is an exceptional academy for kids ages 15 through 18 who are not in real trouble yet, but maybe on the road to it. And it's a very disciplined 22 weeks for these young people, and it is such a positive environment for them. It's run by the military, the National Guard military, and it's just a great opportunity for kids that may go down the wrong road headed that way to make a right turn and make something out of their lives. I did have an opportunity in a tour before. I talked to a young man from Bakersfield, and I asked one of the officials if I could just pull a child out of the classroom by random and talk to him, and he said, yes, he did. So I pulled this young man out from Bakersfield and asked him if he liked being in Grizzly Academy. It is their choice to be there. Nobody forces them. It's not judged, ordered. Nobody forces them to be there. He said the first two weeks, he just kicked and yelled about being in there. He said that afterwards, he started to learn the disciplined process of someone taking the time to sit and care for you the whole time, but yet putting you through the learning process of school, because you will get a graduating diploma from it, whether it be a GED or another, another degree out of it. And he said he realized that he was a young man that needed discipline issues. You know, he, he needed the discipline in his life to get him on the straight pattern. In the middle of their 22 weeks, they send them home for a weekend, and this is a great test for the kids. He went home and he discovered he had nothing in common with his old friends because he saw what he was like during that process, and he couldn't wait to get back to school. So I asked him, I said, you're almost getting ready to graduate. What are you going to do? He says, I'm going into the military. He goes, because I have to continue on, on this path if I'm going to make anything really good out of my life. And he says, I, I recommend it to my friends, to my peers, to anybody who will get the opportunity to be able to attend Grizzly Academy, and it's just amazing. I did go to a graduation, I did a follow-up with the graduation, and the graduation, they start you off with marching skills. It's, it's basically a whole military type of environment. I, I've been to boot camp with, when my son, or when my brother graduated from Camp Pendleton, and so it was that, that type of environment with the marching and everything like that. But then to see them actually walk across the stage and get that diploma because they've worked so hard for it was just amazing. So we're, we're looking at that as Santa Maria Joint High School Union to maybe possibly bring a smaller version of that to the city of Santa Maria. And these children come from all over the place. They come from everywhere. It's just, it's absolutely great. On Thursday, April 23rd, I attended the grand opening of Heritage, Heritage Square Homes. That was another nice homes that have been built in the city of Santa Maria subdivision. Friday, April 24th, on the request of San Luis Obispo County Supervisor Debbie Arnold, I attended the Latina Outreach Council Fiesta in Napomo, and that was really a nice, nice dinner and auction, goes to a really good cause. Wednesday, April 29th, I met with Steve Newell of Wincet and had a small tour, and, need to talk to Rick in regards to that. On Thursday, April 30th, attended the Santa, the Santa Barbara County APCD meeting, and this is what got me with that, because that was basically setting the thresholds on AB-32. When AB-32 came around, I worked for Senator Sam Blakesley, and so many people fought against AB-32 that it was just the most horrible thing to ever, ever hit the state. They were fighting to keep AB-32 at the threshold that it is right now, so I found that to be a very interesting meeting. Friday, May 5th, I attended a briefing on the Ladderman Act at VTC, and the Ladderman Act is such a great, it's such a great act. It's people with disabilities, and it's being threatened with funding, and so they're looking for different sources of state and federal funding for, for that. But it's just been an awesome, awesome act. And last night, May 4th, I gave a talk to the senior club at the Muscle Center and gave them an update on the, why they wanted to know about the water issue and wanted to know where we were with the Santa Maria Police Department and how many troops we had on the ground and the whole thing. So that, that's it.
Ms. Zuniga?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended an event honoring Sister Janet. Councilmember Waterfield attended with me.
Sister Janet, I didn't mean to forget you.
Hannah Beth Jackson, Senator Hannah Beth Jackson had honored her with some other women in Santa Barbara, and it was a really small event, and so people in, in Santa Maria wanted to kind of follow up on that. So we had, I think, about 40 people at that event. It was really nice, so enjoyed that, and it was always great to see Sister. And then I attended two events celebrating International Day of the Worker, so there was a press conference, and then in the evening, there was a rally, so I attended both of those. It was really great to be able to recognize those people who are working. And then I did the Ben Hayes Show after our last city council meeting, and that's it for me. Thank you, Mayor.
I also attended the Grizzly Youth Academy tour with Ms. Waterfield, and we went with Superintendent Mark Richardson of the Santa Maria Joint Union High School District. This, the Grizzly Academy, and I can't remember how many applicants they have, but, but they aren't, they have like 122 kids there at any one time, and the region goes all the way up to the Oregon-California border, because there's only a couple of these academies in, in the state of California. They are very successful in, in the graduates that, that leave this academy. On April 23rd, I attended the Santa Barbara CEO Annual Advisory Committee meeting. That evening, I attended the Ladies Get Loud for Calm, which is an organization to help abuse children. Friday, April 24th, attended Fight Back Santa Maria Valley Board Meeting and the Day of Hope Thank You Celebration. On the, on the April 30th, APCD Board Meeting, we held a special meeting. Those of us that are mayors and represent all areas in Santa Barbara County supported the AB-32 threshold, while there were speakers there that wanted zero emission, zero emissions, and then there's some that only wanted 10 parts per million emissions in the county. But it was, it was a positive vote from everyone that is, like I said, especially from the North County that were mayors, and, and the two supervisors, Lavigno and Adam were there. The other supervisors were not in attendance. May 1st, last Friday, I attended the Seventh Annual Spring Concert and Silent Auction at Santa Maria High School. The director, Mr. Baldivia, does a fantastic job with these kids, and the concert was held in the Ethel Pope Auditorium. They are truly musicians. It's not what you see and hear on other young people and their music. They tubas, the bass, the flute, and they were, they were playing like a big, like the big band orchestras, and very, very talented young people and a, a great director. I went over to the Eagles Hall to do a, to do a fundraiser for the Elks. I, I was bartending there and, yeah, and so I, I don't know why they invite people who don't know how to do it, but anyway, they do. So, May 2nd, I, I went to Disneyland with the Royal Families, and this is an organization that mentors foster children from ages seven to 12, and they needed chaperones. Anyway, and I came back, I think I slept all the way back. May 4th, All-America City Committee, they kicked off their community speaking event last night, and there was probably, what, about 25 people there in attendance? And, and they were talking about, about their neighborhoods and how, and what they were doing to keep them safe and how they, how they've organized with other community members. Did the Ben Hayes, oh, and I want to thank Tahira Masood and Rebecca Carey because they did a good job of, of putting that on last night. And this morning, did the Ben Hayes radio show, and that is it. Any other comments from city council? Good. None?
Ah, thank you.
Yes, yes. This meeting is adjourned.